What is H? Yuzk is coming. He's here.
He's here.
He's hiding back there. Do you want to speak?
Do you want us to call you forward all the time?
Yeah.
I'm teasing you.
You're on the agenda, do you want, on the consent agenda, so if you have some things to say, we can pull it, pull it off or not. He's gonna pull it.
Last's gonna pull it, so it's tough, you're coming up. There you go.
Okay. Sue, is she coming?
India, will you do me a favor? Will you read the mission statement tonight? Thank you. I think Astor read it last month and...
If she's gonna read it, I'm gonna fix her. Charles, I didn't know if you would do that, so I thought I would...
Did I do something that you thought I already did?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying. I'm, I'm looking out. Girls gotta stick together.
And the flag's back on this side, everybody. So, so we know, okay? It was over here for a while, but it's back over here, so I think we're all...
Are they messing with this for what?
Yeah, exactly. Jesse won't be here. All right. As soon as Sue's there, we'll go. Everybody ready?
Good evening. I would like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now India is going to read our mission statement.
The mission. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that every, each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to our community.
Thanks, India. The first item on our agenda then is Exhibit A, and this is a public hearing for our roofing projects at East High, Bunker Middle, and Hoover. And so at this point, I would declare the hearing open and ask if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board on this matter of the hearing? All right, then seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing? The public hearing? Thanks, Rhonda. And second?
Yes.
India, thank you. Great, and all those in favor then of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The hearing is closed. The next item on our agenda is a board celebration of why Waterloo schools, and this is something that Dr. Smith has started, and I think we had our first one last week, or two weeks ago, pardon me, and so I'm gonna turn it over to you. I know we have honored guests in the audience tonight.
For those of you who are in the viewing audience and those in our boardroom, Dr. Lindemann challenged us at our opening day to think about why we chose to, to live and work and enjoy the learning community of Waterloo Community School District. And tonight, we have with us to share some of his thoughts, Mike Fisher, who's the principal at Hoover Middle School.
Mike, will you make sure that that little green light's, there you go. Now I can hear ya.
I remember that from being a band director, so, well, good evening. When I was asked to talk about Waterloo, I was thrilled to do, have the opportunity. So, I'll start out with what, what I knew about Waterloo, and it goes back to when I was 16 years old and I was dating my future wife, that's how long we've been together, and her house in Oskaloosa where we grew up, I married my high school sweetheart, two hours south of here, is on Highway 63, and right outside of her house, there's a sign that says Waterloo, 99 miles, and I go, who goes to Waterloo? Seems like a long ways away, right? And so, fast forward, gosh, 10 years later, I get a cold email from Gary Norris and say, would you be interested in interviewing for a position in administration in Waterloo? And Sarah and I, of course, married at that point, she goes, what do you know about Waterloo? I said, I know it's 99 miles from your house. That's really all I know. And we came up and we were just blown away. I remember Dr. Opit at the time, Dr. Cox, Gary Norris, took us around, showed us the district, and we were just blown away by the things that were happening in the district, went through classrooms and saw the teaching and learning at such incredible levels, seeing diversity, which, which threw me off because I was diversity in my town. I mean, I, I grew up in like the whitest, most homogenous town in the planet, and, and I was the, the one novelty Asian guy, and so coming to a town and recognizing that diversity exists, and also recognizing that sometimes what we think of the real, real world is not the real world, and be able to embrace that. And so we, we made the hard decision to leave the town we, we loved and lived in, and I taught band for six years, and she taught there as well, and we, we jumped and came to Waterloo. That's been six years ago, and we couldn't be happier. If I died today, I'm not saying that's, that's kind of a depressing thought, but I'd be buried here. This is my home. And I mean that. We live in Waterloo, we've had two houses, I'd still live two blocks from Hoover if that house wasn't too small, so we bought a bigger house, and it's still a 50701 zip code, and we'll always live in Waterloo because we live in the place that we teach and love. My wife teaches third grade, Sarah's a third grade teacher at Irving Elementary, has a delightful granddaughter named Kingsley, I think somebody knows on the board, but I, you know, and that's just what we love, because just like that, it's a huge family. It's a big town, but it's not. We all know each other, we all love each other. And again, we have challenges, and we love that. We dig our heels in and we fight the challenges every day, and what I'm so impressed by, our district and our people, is that we fight the hard battles. You know, I remember coming on six years ago when we changed some things, big things in the district, and one of the things I'm most proud of is how we teach mathematics, and that's incredible, and that wasn't easy, that was hard, and I was on the front line because I walked right into that, six years ago, had no idea what I was getting into, but now we look at our scores and we look how our kids are learning math, and we celebrate that. We don't stop because it's hard, we do it because it's right, and that's why I love being part of this district, so I love being part of this team, and it is a huge family. We love this town, we, we just think it's such an amazing, incredible place, there's so much history here, there's so much diversity, and what I love about the diversity too is we fight injustice in this town. We fight things like oppression, and we fight things that we think are wrong in the world, and we try to make it right, and, and we put it on our terms, and I see that in our staff. I just met with the Hoover staff, and I said, I never knew I'd love a group of people as much I love my band kids, and I love you like I love the band kids, because I see what they do on the front lines every day with our kids, and we fight things like, like things that are wrong, and teach them to go out and make the world a better place, because I challenge that to our kids every day. I said, who's gonna be the next Martin Luther King? Who's gonna be the next Obama? Who's gonna be the next great leader in our country? And I said, it's gonna come out of Waterloo, and I said, as cool as it'd be to be that guy, I'm glad to be one of the teachers that's helping craft and create that next, that generation of leaders. So, that's what we do every day, and I don't think we get enough credit for it some days, so I'm glad that Dr. Smith invited me to come up and say that my wife and I've chosen Waterloo, and my son Joshua will be in Waterloo School someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have anything further for him? All right then. Yay!
Thank you.
Way to start the meeting. All right, the next item on our agenda then is an International Baccalaureate and Advanced Programming update. I know we have Sharice Orpman, who is our IB and Advanced Programs Coordinator with us tonight, as well as Dr. McNulty, I know we may tap over there too, so. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a little more strategy, but...
I think everybody does tonight.
Also, so what, I'm gonna give you the update on IB from our 2016...
Is that mic on? Nope.
Yeah, it's green.
Okay.
Well, keep talking, they'll adjust you.
They'll figure.
And I'm a former theater kid, so I'm sure I can project.
Use your teacher voice.
Teacher voice. So, I'm gonna start just for the first couple of minutes, I'm giving you the IB update, and I know we have a lot of new board members, so you might have some specific questions about what is the International Baccalaureate program?
We can't hear it.
We can't.
Is the button put, is it, it's still green?
It's a green light on.
Oh, hi!
There!
Hey! How's that? It looked like it was on.
That green light.
Nope, that green light. I thought it was that green light. Hey, everyone, how is it now?
Hi, that's much better.
All right, thanks. Okay. So I'm gonna go over IB, the updates from our 2017 graduating class, which is only the second graduating class with the IB diploma, and then we have Alex, who's a senior at East High, so why Waterloo? What a perfect way to segue into why not, right? And then I wanna give you about five minutes. I'm, I do have a prezi to show you on advanced programs. For some of you who are new to the board, you might not know all that we offer. IB, as we say, is sort of, you know, the cherry on top, but we have an incredible Sunday, and we have so many things a lot of people don't know about in Waterloo, so, so just giving you a quick overview. So I might need to be trying to locate that while Alex is up here, but let me start off. My name is Sharice Orpman. I'm the Advanced Programs Coordinator and International Baccalaureate for Waterloo Community Schools. I think it's the best job on the planet. I have to stop saying that because I know other people might want this position, and I love it so much, and I'm not going anywhere, and I'm also a Waterloo girl, and we live in Waterloo and our kids go to Waterloo, and we're very proud of that, and they will graduate from the Waterloo Public School System. Very proud. So let me go ahead, and Alex is gonna pass this, go ahead and give this to Dr. Smith. All right. So, last year, as you may or may not know, was the only, the second graduating cohort to go through the IB diploma program. We are currently with our juniors and seniors at 53 students in the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program. They are only in the program their junior and senior years. It's a two-year program. I want you to see where we're at, and something I'm incredibly proud of, our college credits received based on IB scores this year, similar to advanced placement courses. Students in the IB diploma program sit for May exams at the end of two years. Interestingly enough, our kids are really, you know, they're, they're state school kids. They're wanting to stay in Iowa, and I'm really proud of that. They're going on to Iowa, Iowa State, and UNI. We really equally divided that, about a third of all of our kids went to a state school, and I'm very proud of that. UNI now recognizes every single Waterloo Schools IB course. They have changed and updated their acceptance rate. We didn't have a lot of IB graduates going to our state schools. We have one campus in Des Moines at Central Campus. They graduate of a cohort of about eight to 10 kids, and they tend to go on to premier colleges, so I'm very proud that we've got a lot of students who plan to stay in the state, and one, Jocelyn Roof, I just got an email from her at University of Iowa, and she wants to go into education. What will Waterloo have for her down the road? What a great kid to, to have come full circle. So, I'm very proud that our local colleges, based on Iowa, Iowa State, and UNI, are regents. It's about 359 per credit, and we recovered 151 hours, estimated tuition around $54,000. This is only from 16 students. So as you can see there, I won't break it all down for you, but that's how many hours within those content areas they recovered, so those are their core liberal arts courses that were satisfied based on those courses. Also, we received over $300,000 in scholarships from those 16 students this year. We still have about two more students who haven't fully reported all the scholarships that they've received. I always boast that it's because they can write an incredible essay, and colleges want them. So you're gonna hear from Alex and hear how articulate he is. IB diplomas, we ended up with 13 out of 16. This is a very rigorous path for them to receive the IB diploma. All Waterloo students in the IB diploma program end up with a Waterloo Schools diploma, but this is on top of that. If you receive a certain number of scores, International Baccalaureate also provides you with a diploma, to say that's a really rare thing to accomplish, and you've, you've shown the work, and you're one of less than 1% of kids in the world that have an IB diploma, which is pretty cool. And I don't know if you know this, but we're not even IB world until we go through five years of graduating students. We're in our second year, and if you look right there, something I'm incredibly proud of, our Waterloo students are above the diploma rate for the world average. We have 81% of our kids this year. That doubled from last year. Our estimated tuition totals doubled from last year. Total hours recovered at college doubled from last year. That's in two years. I am so proud of these teachers, they're committed to outcomes. That's impressive. As you go down, we have four courses that are above the world average out of the courses we offer, and then this is interesting, if you're familiar with AP, most AP acceptance, three, four, or five on a five-point scale, those are satisfied at universities. In IB, it's four, five, six, or sevens. So if you look over here, we averaged about 79% of our kids ended up with fours or hires. You can see the East High average is 4.5, West High's 4.74, the world average is 4.7. That's incredible. I mean, this is after two years. This is a very targeted, committed, working group of professionals who sit together to do collaborative scoring. They spend probably 80% of their time on a class that maybe is just one or two of the classes that they teach, because they wanna be that targeted. And now, the exciting thing is they're transferring those habits into other classes that they teach that are not necessarily IB courses, so building their capacity. Also, the ACT average of students in the IB diploma program last year was 27.13 composite. The district average is about 20 right now. We're working on building that up for advanced programming, and that's really where the big scholarship return comes in. We have a lot of kids that ended up with 30s or higher. So I want you to hear from Alex, because these are numbers and these aren't people, and these aren't stories. So he's a really cool dude and a future public speaker and maybe the next president coming out of the Waterloo Community School District, so Alex, come on out and tell us why Waterloo, why IB.
Hi there. I'm gonna adjust this since I'm a little taller. All right. So, my name is Alejandro Medina Valencia, but everyone calls me Alex, to simplify the stories. So, I guess the best way to explain my background would to be my history. I was born in Allen Hospital, I've been going to, every year changed houses during elementary, so I've been to every elementary school in the Waterloo District, so I've gotten to know a lot of people. And then, a tragedy in having a family, I had to move to Mexico, and I went there for, studied there in middle school for three years, and I came back. And the reason I came back was the education. I could not handle myself in a new environment. Over there, it was four hours of school, it was either in the afternoon or in the day, very core classes, very restrictive, but when I got to the Waterloo area, I always thought about all the classes and opportunities I got, so I had to think and decided, I will continue my education in the United States. So currently, I've left my parents and I'm studying here to get the best education I can. So, that's what I got. So then I got into high school. I went to East High School, and many may know, East High may have a bad rep. So that was my initial thought, I'm going to a bad school. What do I do? That's when things started shining through. Freshman year was hard, I had to learn the way with high school. Sophomore year, I got into sports, I got to know people. All these connections, suddenly everyone, I knew everyone. You were on the sports team, you knew everyone in the school. Then came junior year, I had to make a choice. I'm a very smart individual, and there's two things I can do. Actually, three things at this point. I can graduate early, I can take eight AP courses and choose the topics I'm strong at, or there's this new thing that came out called IB. And IB, the way I saw it was, okay, we're gonna challenge you in every single field imaginable in the Waterloo Schools District. I'm taking arts, I'm taking lingering lit, I'm taking precalculus, calculus, then I went to take on biology, IB biology, and these are all things I felt good about, but not strongly, especially the mathematics area. So I started thinking, well, yes, I could advance myself by choosing the classes I'm good at, let's challenge myself overall and see where I am. This is my senior year. My junior year was difficult to get that shift from your normal high schooler to now you're gonna be ready for college. I'm writing on my own essays, I just finished, finished a history IA, an internal assessment about the Ron genocide, I'm also talking about the morality of machines and how ethical they are, I'm also thinking about doing my own experiment of evolution right now with bacteria colonies, and I'm trying to change and see different environments, and how can I evolve them or change them to benefit in some way and probably move that to medicine. And so far, while I'm doing all this, I still have other responsibilities of, I'm a teenager, I wanna have social friends, I also have a job, I have to think of all these things and family, I need to call them because I'm not living with them at the moment, so what do I do? So, IB taught me the time management skill of, okay, homework, school, work, family, friends, lunch, and let's repeat tomorrow. So that's been my life for the past year and a half, I guess, and it's been really successful. I didn't think I could do everything at once, but that's one of the things the IB diploma taught me. It taught me, look at the world, look around you, this person thinks differently from you, how do we communicate without fighting? So, that's been really strong for the IB diploma, and I think personally, I enjoyed this experience. Obviously, this is just my point of view, I can't speak for everyone, but it challenged me in a way that I haven't been challenged in probably elementary, and by taking a worldview, taking a step back, looking at the world, and that's really all I can say right now.
So, questions for either of us on IB, and then we'll move into like about five minutes of overview of advanced programs? Oops, sorry. Any questions about IB, last year's marks, or any questions for Alex? Lyle, yes.
Do you find the IB program restrictive in any way?
I find it restrictive in the sense that there are certain topics we must study. However, once we get to write our own papers, we are allowed to choose whatever we want, be that whatever field. Example for science, it has to be scientifically inclined, but I could talk about the velocity of a baseball and how that affects the human bone fracture, I can talk about how cells are changing inside the corn we grow, and just talk about business in that way. We choose our own topics, they just have to be inclined to a certain top, like area. Example for the arts, if I wanted to, I could write a whole formula and present that in art and talk about the artistic value of that formula, of the shapes, geometry, just how patterns work. It's restrictive in the sense it just has to be inclined.
But do you think in general, the design of the program is, is pretty good?
I enjoy it. One thing, if you want criticism at the moment, just to not praise it completely, for East High, we only have the six classes. For West High, they have an other, instead of biology, you could take IB chemistry. Hey, it works now. It's just class options. The more IB we got, the more classes we got, the more we can expand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I just wanna thank you for your narrative is awesome for so many reasons. Could you recommend or make suggestions on how we can recruit and retain more students that have challenging backgrounds?
I think the strongest thing you should do is talk with the parents. Kids are scared, parents are not. Parents want the best for their kids. Therefore, if you can tell them about this opportunity about changing their child at an early age to challenge them in life, so that later in life, they're ready, I think that would be very strong. Just get the message across that this may be hard for your child now, but it will pay off in the future.
And Alex, what are your future aspirations?
Currently, I've been accepted to IO State for engineering and sciences. I'm planning on becoming a zoologist, a Howard's College, and that changes a lot, so we'll see, but science is really my strong suit.
Awesome. Thank you. Have they given you scholarships?
I just need to prove I'm in the guardianship right now to get like my FAFSA papers through with IO State, but, they've been offering a lot.
Okay. So just please let your guidance counselors know if you need help with not having to pay for school. Thanks, Alex. We appreciate you being here tonight. So right, why Waterloo, why not? Why not? That's just one part. I did not get a chance to get this to come up, so I apologize, I was gonna use this system, so I'll just do a quick overview. I can stay on task for five minutes to give you a summary of advanced programs. This is just one part. We have a whole, and a lot that maybe you're not familiar with, so I'm gonna pass these out because there's some references in the TOE work that you can look at. And I did give you a couple of documents too, as far as some of the equivalency credits that are transferring with the courses we already offer at the high school, that are not IB, AP, and also the concurrent, which are the liberal arts courses right now that we're building up, as well as Waterloo Career Center courses. Okay, so if you're not familiar with advanced programs, that's also my role and responsibility in Waterloo, and what we have is gifted programming is law in the state of Iowa, it's been law since 1990. So if you turn to page 12, the elementary gifted ed services within this manual, you can see that we break gifted program into three tiers for elementary and middle school. Our ELP teachers, we call them Expanded Learning Program Resource Teachers versus Talented and Gifted. That acronym changed, I wanna say it's been at least 15, if not 20, years. But you might hear the term gifted and talented, and that's the state of Iowa, that's how they identify students in the program. So, we have tier one, our ELP teachers are in every single building in Waterloo, a minimum of 50% of their contract time, so .5, based on number of kids at that, not number of kids in gifted programming, number of kids in the building, and that's where you get to the tier one, which is differentiation for all. So the ELP resource teacher provides services and professional development so that classroom teachers understand how to extend students. As a big part of advanced programming that a lot of people don't know, they're a resource teacher, almost like an instructional coach. The tier two that our ELP teachers provide is a little more targeted, this is for a few kids who show an aptitude in a particular subject, maybe one or two areas, and they really need to be extended. We don't want kids to sit idle, we wanna make sure everyone has their needs being met. There, it could be a talent development group, it could be the ELP teacher going into modeling, it could be, we've had kids set up with mentors at the universities because their thinking skills need to be extended that far, even when they're in elementary and middle school. It could be an independent study, mentors that come out of the high school. We have some of our AP and IB kids coming down and providing after-school for those advanced kids. So it hits two things, you know, National Honor Society Service learning, and also building their pathway to know of opportunities that they have when they're in Waterloo. And then finally, that tier three is about 8 to 10% of our kids identified as accelerated in every content area, and that would be a student identified as gifted and talented by the state of Iowa. We usually go through the identification process around third grade, because we have universal screeners and more evidence that goes beyond just high-stakes tools, and I'm very proud of the work in the last two years. If you turn to page 10, the identification criteria is there for you to look at, and if it says you are, that means underrepresented. So we look at things like outliers within subgroups, if it's a culturally biased assessment. We have the Naglieri, which is based on a visual matrix, so it is a non-language dependent assessment. We look at learning characteristics and motivation, we look at leadership qualities that maybe aren't assessed from core, core testing, but it's observable. So there's a lot of things that we use, it's not just something that's standardized, there's a lot of formative measures that are used in that selection process. Remember, this is only about 10% of the population, but our gifted ed teachers in the buildings work with all. Again, that tier one is differentiation for all, to help teachers understand what is rigor, what is a more complex return for our students. So that's, might be something a lot of people aren't aware of, and then we switched over our model at middle school. It used to be only ELP, meaning only for the 10%, and now we use the elementary model, which is the tier two, talent development, outside-of-school activities, mentors, independent studies. And then the other things we have going on are twice exceptional, which is huge right now. This is the manual, this is our rollout year, we were provided with some private donors to start the work, and the ELP teachers are the roster teachers to run the strengths high, so it's gifted with a disability, and so that we turn it into a strengths-based instead of a deficit model, we have the ELP teacher as the roster teacher to always ensure that those students have their strengths being met in the Waterloo Schools. So it's, it's awesome, and we thank the, the donors, and we thank the Waterloo School Foundation for allowing us to start that work this year as our rollout year. We're very proud of it. And then at the high school, some things that are changing is, we've increased the number of our teachers teaching Hawkeye classes, bless you, those are called concurrent. We always have UNI courses available, we've increased the number of AP courses at both East and West, and our IB courses that are non-comparable will be opened up as singletons. So things like IB Theater Arts, instead of a student going off to UNI to take an advanced college-level Theater Arts course, we're gonna open that up to... we're going to open that up to single tens. So there's a few that, that, uh, will look a little different next year in their structure. And when it's this good, why not build capacity in programs we already have? Why not Waterloo? Right? It's pretty awesome. Questions, so there's a lot. Questions on that. Very proud of it.
So if a student at East, if you, so are you going to offer like the theater for both schools? Or they would be transferred? What, what, what would happen?
It depends on what teachers I have to, to offer it.
Got it.
Right now, I had an IB theater teacher. She actually moved out of the district, so I only have the one at West High. But we have kids going back and forth all the time. We really call it which campus.
Got it.
And especially with the Waterloo Career Center, we're turning into more of a which campus offers the right path or opportunity for you. Um, at East High, we have a beautiful new course called IB Health Science Exercise, which is a really cool class. And we just happen to have the person at East High who offers that. So if kids want to take that course, they go to East High for it. Great question.
And, uh, I'm really excited about this. And, uh, how responsive is the ELP to third grade readers? Because you know, with the ESSA, how does your, how do your programs respond, uh, to our immigrant students and some of our students from, um, low socio-economic and socio-cultural backgrounds?
We have a lot of, if you, there, when kids are in kindergarten, first and second grade, we use other tools such as birdie king or observation inventory. And those things tend to be a little more culturally fair versus being biased because they're observable. So it might be a student's perspective when they draw the inside of Little Red Riding Hood's, um, the, the map of Little Red Riding Hood's route or Goldilocks, the Three Bears house. If they look at it from a different view or an aerial view, those are things that come out. Kids who pick up on language acquisition quickly, those are things that come out. Using the Naglieri is based on visual matrix. So we have a lot of kids who are visually and spatially talented. And you see our Waterloo there. You really do. Great question.
So what is your process for assessing and adding students after third grade?
Well, typically, um, Lyle, third grade is when they start, we, we work more with talent development in kindergarten, first and second, so that the ELP teacher can get to know the student, uh, work with the classroom teachers on ways they can help them differentiate for the kids in their classroom. And then in third grade, we have a cognitive abilities test, which is a universal screener. So it just gives us more evidence based on things that we're already seeing. Um, formal identification is usually by their fourth grade year. And that's where they get a flag on Infinite Campus that says GT by the state guidelines of gifted and talented. That's what we use that for. And those students always have to receive differentiated instruction. Um, so it's just the idea of not allowing a student to sit idle, to make sure that where their entry point is, they're being extended. Now, do we have new kids coming into the district who are identified as gifted and talented? Absolutely. We've got kids who are right now going through the process of being identified in their eighth graders. Once you get to high school, we have so many college courses students can take in high school, which is actually a form of acceleration, that it doesn't become as much of an issue because the ELP class is an elective. And a lot of the students are ready to take those college courses by that point. Now, do they have to be identified to take those courses? Absolutely not. That's why we're so open access.
That, that was my last question. How do parents, if they're interested, um, find out more information on how to get their, their kids assessed if, if they feel that they're GT?
They can contact the building ELP resource teacher. Every building has somebody who is a, uh, ELP resource teacher who does a series of intakes and uses different tools to, to determine that. So knowing what school they're at, I would know which teacher to contact. You can contact me. Even without the presentation, look at how focused and on track I stayed. Thanks, board. Great to see new faces.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charisse. Have a good evening.
All right, the next item on our agenda then is information from individuals and delegations. And, and before I read my little speech, I will double check to see if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board. Great. Um, so this is an opportunity where those who wish to, uh, may address the school board. And I would ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. And at that time, I would ask that you conclude your public remarks. Please keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students and also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. And we do provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it's generally not a back and forth, um, with items not on our agenda. But it certainly, we will help clarify at the end of our meeting or, um, at a later date if need be. So with that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward and state your name and your home address.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Mulholland, and I live at thirty-four sixteen Verralta Drive, Cedar Falls. I'm a sixth grade teacher at Central Middle School, and I'm the president of the Waterloo Education Association. I'm here to tell you why I choose Waterloo. I continue to choose Waterloo every day. I grew up in Waterloo on the corner of Independence Avenue and Mobile Street. I attended the Waterloo schools and graduated from East High School. I believe that the Waterloo schools provides the building blocks that help make Waterloo the community that we all choose home, as home. I'm here in Waterloo to be the teacher I would want for my own children. I'm here in Waterloo to be the teacher that cares about the whole child. I'm here in Waterloo to be the teacher that pushes her students to be the very best that they can be. I'm here in Waterloo to give my students the same education that I benefited from in the Waterloo schools. Just like many of the teachers I represent, I'm here in Waterloo to be the teacher that makes a difference, each and every day, in every conceivable way, for every student in my classroom. Thank you. I choose Waterloo.
Thank you, Becky. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? All right. Then seeing that, we will move on to our consent agenda. It's fairly long this evening. It consists of nine items, um, the minutes of the October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen regular board meeting, and the November sixth, two thousand seventeen special board meeting. Personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, a donation from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, a high school government class trip to Washington DC, the appointment of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen School Improvement Advisory Committee, the appointment of board member to the UEN Steering Committee, the destruction of audio tapes and minutes of board closed sessions, and the adjusted board meeting dates for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. Can I get those nine items? I'd like to, a motion to put those on the table. Thanks, Sue. And a second? Thank you, Aster. Um, are there any items that, uh, members wish to have removed from the agenda? I know we talked about H.
Item H, please.
Okay. Anything else? Then all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda items D, E, F, G, I, J, K, and L, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item H on page twenty-four, which is the high school government class travel to Washington DC.
I move the Board of Education approve travel for East High and West High students and Mr. Youska to Washington DC, February eighteenth to the twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
And a second? Thank you, Rhonda. And discussion? Mr. Youska, would you maybe come up here to the microphone for us?
First of all, how many years have you been doing this?
And make sure that green light's on.
It is on.
The real green light.
It is on, correct?
Excellent, yes.
Okay.
You're good.
I'm sorry that Charisse had to leave. She had to go home. She hasn't seen her kids. I actually wanted to put a plug in for her. I've been teaching AP Government since two thousand twelve. And when it started out, I only had like just a very few students. But because of her efforts and the, and the IB program, there are more and more kids who want to challenge themselves and are willing to take more challenging classes, including taking a government for a year and happened to put up with me for a year, quite honestly. Um, but Charisse and I have talked, and one of the biggest goals that come out of, uh, AP Government is, could we take this student when they're finished at the end of the year and put them in a college level intro to political science class? And how would they do? And I, I've told her, I said, by the time they leave me, we could put them in there with a junior or senior, and they would hold their own in discussions and stuff as far as academics. So, so anyway. Um, for those of you who don't know and the new board members, my name is Tom Youska. I teach at West High School. Uh, Nicole Presley was originally going to be here tonight, but she has another job that she works after hours as a teacher. So she had originally planned to be here tonight, and she couldn't. Um, as far as Mr. Schmidt, you've been asking how long I've been doing this. Well, uh, let's go back. When I was sixteen years old, someone took me on a trip to Washington DC. I know I've told some of the board members this before. And it was a life-changing week for me. Um, and I already knew I wanted to be a teacher, and I said, someday I'm going to do this for kids. I'm going to take them to Washington DC and see the sights and teach them about government and, and, and everything else too. So lo and behold, later on, uh, I was a teacher at North Tama Schools. And in nineteen ninety-four, I came across a group called Close Up, which is a nonprofit group. Uh, quite honestly, it started in nineteen seventy-one. Alan J. Alender and a senator from Louisiana left thirty-five million dollars to the federal government with a specific purpose of setting up a nonprofit foundation-type situation. And somehow, the government managed to not lose all that money or spend it unwisely. And so they started Close Up Foundation. And what it was, was a program to bring high school kids to Washington DC to learn about government and see the sights and, and have fun too. So I got started with them in nineteen ninety-four at North Tama, and it was a struggle. I was having trouble trying to get kids going. And eventually, we took a couple of trips and kind of had it going. And then I was recruited to come to Waterloo, back to Waterloo schools in the year two thousand. Uh, Waterloo schools had already done it. Columbus had already done it, and several other schools in the area like Cedar Rapids, Jefferson had already done it. Um, when I came, Bob Wheaton left Waterloo schools to become an administrator. And so it was an easy fit that I had already familiar with Close Up to do this. So it was ninety-four, Mr. Schmidt, but I haven't done it every year. I didn't do it the year after the nine eleven attacks. And I didn't do it the year that Washington DC had the sniper because nobody wanted to send their kids. And not quite frankly, I didn't want to take any kids that year. Uh, so I've been doing it off and on quite a, quite a bit. But every year since, I've, I've been at, at West. And so anyway. Uh, the trip itinerary is spelled out for you, and it's copied for you. The dates were February eighteenth through the twenty-third. And quite frankly, the reason Nicole and I chose that week is because it is the cheapest week for the kids to go. It's about two hundred and thirty dollars cheaper than any other weeks. Uh, prices tend to go up seasonally in Washington DC. And if you've ever visited in the summer, you know, it's, it's, uh, quite high. Um, the plan is, is to fly out of Waterloo early, uh, to leave at two AM and take the first flight out of Cedar Rapids to try and fly Delta. And my goal is to, uh, have students at Arlington Cemetery by one fifteen. We ditch our bags in the hotel, we ride the metro and get something to eat, even though the kids have probably already eaten three times on the airplane and at the airports. And so we're milking, milking a little out of the extra day. And then that night, they have a introduction briefing, orientation, and the conservative-liberal debate, which they have two leading members from the conservative-liberal parties in Washington DC from various organizations come in and argue. And the kids are a part of it and can ask questions. And one year, we had the two people almost get in a fight, and of course, the kids love that, so. Uh, Monday and Tuesday are filled with seeing the big monuments. And I want you to notice that this year, Close Up put in the questions at all of the places they visit. Last year, after I came home from Washington DC, one of the things that I was involved in was doing a lesson plan on Close Up's methodology with their curriculum director. He actually asked me to do this. And so I've been in close contact with him. And it's kind of interesting, today's in-service involved McTeague and Wiggins, uh, one of the things we had to read today. Um, I didn't know much about them until last spring after I got home. Had to do my research, working with the curriculum director at Close Up, had to read their books, had to go online. And quite frankly, the whole East Coast is very big on these two people as far as educational theorists. And I was kind of interested today when I saw their names pop up, uh, in our in-service, uh, reading that we had to do as a group. But it, Close Up's all big on their methodology. And so you see the questions there. For example, if we were to visit, I've got to get my glasses out, sorry. Um, if we were to visit Franklin Roosevelt Memorial Visit, should government take an active role in providing for basic needs? If we go to Jefferson, we ask hard, essential questions. That's what McTeague and Wiggins are very big on. Um, what about Jefferson and the controversies behind his life besides the fact that he was, you know, a statesman? So there's a lot of learning that goes on, even though the kids are traveling around very fast and having a lot of fun and seeing the sights. Um, Tuesday also, one thing we did last year was the first time we went on an embassy visit. And we went to the Embassy of Cameroon, which, uh, I've shared with Comfort, uh, our new director curriculum. And she was quite impressed that we did that, and the kids had a good time with that. And one thing I learned, when you leave the Cameroon Embassy, you do not leave unless you eat first. Uh, we were about ready to leave, and they said, no, that we have, we have to eat first. And we didn't want to cause a, a major state disagreement there. So I guess we had to stay and eat, even though we were supposed to eat after we left. So, so anyway. Uh, Wednesday is Capitol Hill Day. We spend the whole day on Capitol Hill, visiting with legislators, um, seeing the tour of the Capitol, visiting their offices. And I will arrange all that before we go, um, if I can do that. And then in the evening, we have the movie theater night, which is at the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. And it's the play that ends one of four different ways. And I'm going to try and tweak it if I can this year, if we get to do it, um, so that it ends the way I've never seen it end. And then Thursday and Friday, I put together a day based on what we haven't done, what the kids want to do. And usually, I work with the Columbus teacher and the Columbus kids and Jefferson if they go. And there's various options to go see the National Archives, Ford's Theater, um, visit Georgetown, which Jackson wanted to do when we were there. A lot of, a lot of kids like that. And also some of the Smithsonian's. Uh, we pack a lot into the week, but there's still tons and tons of things we do. And last year, we, one of the things I did was, we took the kids on the scandal tour. Now, that's not related to the TV scandal show. I'm talking about the scandals of Washington DC such as the Watergate break-in. So we did Watergate Hotel. Uh, we did the parking garage where the Deep Throat FBI informant, um, gave all his information. We went and visited that place. Uh, the parking garage at the Marriott, which we stayed at one year, where they paid off the plumbers with three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in cash and two grocery bags, which were actually delivered by two teenagers, believe it or not. And the kids thought that was pretty fun, so. So anyway, we kind of, I've kind of entered things like that into it. And then we try to take the last flight out, uh, that we possibly can on Friday night so that we have a whole day there, so. Um, that's the itinerary. Um, as far as trying to get kids from East High to go, I know, Rhonda, you asked about this, actually, you and Angela Weekly. I think it was three years ago. And I was very open to that and everything. And at that time, I had Amy Mehe. I, she was recruited and kind of, we had set up an account at East, and it never materialized. I actually spent time talking to East High teachers, Tony Dell and several others. And I said, you know, that your emphasis is to try and get it going. And it kind of didn't go. And then Nicole kind of grabbed the horns by the rein, and she worked very hard behind the scenes and originally thought that she had two last spring. She had a meeting last spring, an informational meeting. And then, uh, one this summer, when I talked to her in the fall, she thought she had three. I had mentioned to her that I had some parents who were East High parents, and I had a former runner from, uh, I, I coached the junior high kids for Carver and Bunker and Central, and a former runner who is now a student at East. And, and they had talked to me, they said, are you still doing your Washington trip? And they said, could he go? And I said, well, of course he could. And so they had talked to me this winter and, and actually here recently and said, you know, what's going on with that? And I said, well, you know, I'm waiting for board approval and, and, uh, have a meeting. And they said, can we come to the meeting? I said, of course you can. So anyway. So, and I had talked to Nicole about that too. So, um, it's a, it's a struggle to get it going, you know? Just like when I was at North Tama, it was hard to get going those first few years. I only, I started out with two and then made it happen, and then kept going and kept going, and, and, and it's a struggle. So, you know, the seeds are planted as far as if it wants to go. But it's, it's going to keep, continue to take work. And Nicole has worked very, very hard, uh, behind the scenes, and I've tried to be helpful. You know, I mean, we don't, you know, we, we share emails, we share text messages, we share actual phone calls. We actually talk. I actually get her to talk, even though she's younger than me, on her phone. And, you know, and she's tried very, very hard. So, um, you know, we, we, as it looks now, it probably will just be one. When I was asked how many are going from east and, and west, I, I, I don't know yet. I talk to kids, but I don't really have a sign up until after I meet with you as far as how many would go, nor would I want to because that's when the parents would make the deposits. So, um, you know, at that point, so probably one from East and maybe ten, even though it says ten to fifteen on your estimate on there, cuz Amy asked me how many and I was just estimating the other day when, when she said she needed information, so, so anyway.
So what's, what's the reluctance of students to go?
Well, Nicole had one student who didn't wanna go because she doesn't feel comfortable, she wouldn't know anybody. Um, being the only student from East at the time, so she had one student that didn't. She had two students last spring who came to the meeting that I went to and I thought they were still on board until I, I don't know, I, well, I thought they were still on board yet, but she said that they had not come to her fall, October meeting. And then the one who's, I've kinda recruited, who's an East High student and so I think he's still, I'm pretty sure he's still on board. The parents said they were very, very interested in coming to the meeting, so it looks like maybe one East High student this year.
But, but even at, even at West, I mean, what, what, in general terms?
Well, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a cost, it's a bit of a commitment. I have some kids who don't wanna miss a week of school. You know, I've scheduled it other years during conferences because it was the cheapest week and you got by not having to pay a sub for me too, like you said last year, um, Ms. McAllie, you know, she said we get by cheap last year because of that, but. Um, some kids legitimately don't wanna be gone a week, even though I'm very good about talking to the teachers about makeup work and making sure they stay on it when they come back, but. There's, you know, there's a lot of various reasons for it, you know, like, some that I don't even hear about, so. Questions?
How often do you have informationals, um, up to the, before you guys leave? So like in the fall, you have one to two meetings or?
Well, I talk to the kids constantly. I have pictures all over, if you come to my room, there's pictures all over the, I have thousands of pictures in envelopes and I put them all over the wall and kinda talk to them. When I come back, I always have a sign-up and, and I keep you on the mailing list, um, for all four years you're in school if you sign up and you're interested. Then I kinda talk to kids when I see them. I don't see all the kids all the time, you know, West High's a big place. Um, so then what I do is I talk to them, I send out a flyer, uh, when, you know, when I, when I know I can do this after board approval, I'll have an actual meeting, but I've already kinda contacted kids and parents through the thing. Actually, they come back and contact me, you know, I tell them that in the fall I'll be setting up and getting it organized, please come in and stop in and tell me your intentions. Uh, so I, I do it in the fall, but I have a recruitment, I just have the kids sign up in class real quick uh, in the spring when we come back when it, cuz they all wanna hear about it when we come back.
In what grade?
I usually don't take a ninth grader and rarely a tenth grader. Um, just because I'm afraid they might not appreciate it. So usually juniors and seniors, occasionally a tenth grader. Not very many ninth graders, but I would take, I have taken a ninth grader that was very, I have a ninth grader right now that's a junior, senior in government and you would, you don't know she's a ninth grader. She's, she's very, very into the government. She's taken a lot of advanced classes, so she's, you can tell academically she's up to.
This is a wonderful opportunity for the students, I think, and we really appreciate the extra effort you've given this year and every other year.
I'm trying to provide opportunities for kids to think globally. And there's nothing better than, you know, I always have kids that have never flown and so does Columbus, you know, and that's kind of a growing up experience for them, you know, I'm part of it. Um, but, you know, and when they come back, uh, it's a, it's a choice for them, it's, it's, they think differently. I have students, I think I've shared this before, I have students that work in Washington DC now. Uh, one, one girl, one young lady works for the Department of Ag, Columbus has someone that works for the Department of Ag. Uh, there's a former Columbus girl who actually works for Close Up and she's one of the program instructors now. Uh, when I come back, I have kids that are enthused about running for elected office, you know, and when I was at Trera, I had that. I had kids who came back who, uh, ran for like soil commissioner, you know, which most people don't hear about, but they're farm kids, so. You know, it's, it's an office they, they're involved in, so. And one is actually the president of the Iowa Farm Bureau, uh, young, young student, so he's one of my former students too, so, so. The enthusiasm when they come home is, is very big, so.
What type of cost is associated with the trip?
Excuse me?
What type of cost is associated with the trip?
Oh, it's one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven. That includes our plane tickets, which I reserved in May. And the plane ticket is four hundred and sixty-five dollars round trip from Cedar Rapids, which is pretty good. Um, we stay at very safe, very nice hotels, either Hyatt Regencies or Marriott's, which includes like Ms. Board Member Rick Rena has checked on the site, three meals a day. In fact, I had kids gain weight even though we were walking every day. Um, of course they eat more on the side, you know. Uh, but they eat at some of the, they don't always eat at the hotel, they eat at Italian restaurants, they eat at the Pentagon City Mall like you saw at, at different places and and so, uh, you know, it covers their food, their hotel. Uh, my wife and I visited, we stayed at the Marriott, same hotel I like to stay at, it was twelve hundred dollars for one week. And our plane flight, even though I'd scheduled a couple of months in advance, was about eight hundred bucks, so. So it's actually a very good deal. And Washington DC is a very expensive place. That's the thing that Close Up does. I get a lot of flyers in the mail here at school and at home for educational tours and, don't get me wrong, they're all very good, but those people are in business to make money. Close Up keeps costs down and does things in a first-class way. You know, s- good, safe hotels, so we're not in any danger or anything, you know, and and we do things like the, they get bulk tickets for like the theater night at the Kennedy Center. So, uh, sometimes we go to Baltimore to the theater too, we've done that once, so.
Have you ever taken the tour of the White House or the Pentagon?
We did one year. Uh, we used to get in the Pentagon a lot easier, it's, that's a tough one now. The White House one, they've loosened the ropes a little bit. Uh, we set up a tour and you have to have, you used to have to have FBI clearance and you just usually have to have somebody.
I think you still do.
You still do, okay. We haven't done it for about four years, but what happens is, uh, we, uh, we had, well, it was, it was the girl from Columbus who works for the Department of Ag, she helped us in setting it up. And she was supposed to meet us and take all the cameras and purses, cuz you're not allowed to carry those in the White House. And so we were there and our tour was ready to go and she was late, running late for whatever reason, so I told the Columbus teacher, I said, you take the kids, I've been in the White House before. I'll stay here with the purses and when she comes, if she comes, I'll get on one of the other tours. Well, she was fifteen, twenty minutes late, I struck up a conversation with the park ranger and lo and behold, her brother-in-law lived in Waterloo, Iowa. So I, it was cold, I was standing there for twenty minutes and I said, I can't stand here, the tour's gonna go another hour and a half, so. They helped me put all the purses and things all over my arms and all the camera bags, so I had like twenty purses and some of them were quite fashionable, I will admit. And I said, where's the nearest coffee house I can sit where it's warm? Block and a half, and I walked in the door and the lady walks in, she goes, must be a White House tour. I said, she says, just sit down, I'll come wait on you, you don't have to come up to the counter. I said, thank you, so. So we have done it, uh, it's a little more difficult and actually it kinda eats up the time for some of the other things we do, but it's an option, you know, it's something that I wouldn't deny. We used to do the Pentagon a little better, but now the Pentagon is, that's kind of a tough venue. We do the Pentagon Memorial though, as you see on the schedule.
If you could take the Pentagon tour, would you? Could you add it into the schedule?
Uh, sure, Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
That would be one of those things I would do. Kids would probably be very interested in it. Are you, are you gonna help me with that or?
I'll try.
Okay.
I'll try my best. My cousin works in the Pentagon, so.
Usually you do need some connections for Pentagon and White House is what I've found.
And he, I actually took the Pentagon tour, um, and ran into a guy from Cedar Falls that worked in the Pentagon.
I have a friend that worked there and was not there and it was his wing that got hit on nine eleven. He was in Germany for two weeks or he would've been not there. So anyway, but yeah, I need, yeah, I need connections like that, so. Uh, we also go to the Holocaust Museum, that's not marked on there, that's on Wednesday. What I do is if I'm, if I'm clever enough to get all of our visits and the Capitol tour on Wednesday done early, we are at the Holocaust Museum for about four hours before we scoot back to theater night, so. That's not on the schedule, but I, I wrote that on mine to remind you, so. I should've written it on yours.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you again, Mr. Yuska, for, for all of your help. And for those listeners and viewers to know that, uh, they can offer matching funds. So there's a lot of corp, there are a lot of opportunities to help fund that eighteen hundred dollars for students. So we're really asking for community involvement, uh, corporate assistance i- in the way of corporate matching funds. So if you have any questions or would like to donate or to help with that, please contact Mr. Yuska for that. Is that correct, sir?
That's right. They have a actual tax non-fu, or number, it's a nonprofit fund. And that's one thing, you know, um, this trip costs me money out of my own pocket and I still love doing it every year. And people say, don't you get tired of doing this? And I said, no, because there's something new every year that I learn personally. And I, I guess, I want the kids to have the same experience I had when I was sixteen years old, like I had that big eye-opening week in my life too, so, anyway.
And did you know that Alexa Denherter works for, um, Rand Paul? Is that the right name?
Yeah. No, I did not.
A, a Paul Ryan from Wisconsin?
Oh, I didn't know if you.
Sorry.
Alexa that went to West?
Yeah.
Yeah, at her class. No, I didn't know that, wasn't aware of that.
She's, she works, she graduated Iowa and she works for him, so she might be able to give you a.
Didn't know that, so.
Lots of DC connections.
I have some, but, you know, some of them change, so.
I know, they do.
I used to know a guy at the Supreme Court that could get us through. And one year I got, instead of getting the three-minute tour where you sit in the back for three minutes and they shuffle you in and out, I went and I actually looked him up and I said, I have a group tomorrow, what's my chances of sitting not in the three-minute tour? And he said, you come right through here to me tomorrow and I will get you up there. And he put us in the front row. And he said, you get to stay the whole hour. I said, okay.
Yes, sir.
So I still have his name somewhere in my file folders, but I don't, you know, if he's not there, you know, that's the thing, I have to, I'd have to get ahold of him and stuff, so.
Well, thank you very much and it, it is a fantastic program. I can, I can vouch for that myself, so, while my son can, so. Thank you very much.
Even though he didn't go to Georgetown.
He did not go to Georgetown, but you did make a history major out of him, not a poli sci major, but a history major, so.
It's okay.
I'll take that, so. All right, is there anything further for Mr. Yuska? All right, then all those in favor of approving the high school government class trip to Washington DC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. You're going for your fifteenth year?
Uh, more than that.
Twenty-something.
Twenty-something.
I missed that, sorry. Okay, well, you're going again, so.
Thank you, thank you for the kids that are going. Uh, they'll be very happy about this.
Excellent.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, so that concludes our consent agenda items this evening. Then we'll move on to item M, which is on page thirty-five. And this is for information only, this is the first reading of a board policy change and I would ask that Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, come forward.
Thank you. We just continue to update policies to reflect current practice, so if you look on page thirty-five, the proposed change to two eighteen, which is policy maintenance dissemination and review is second to the last paragraph, striking Board Secretary and replacing it with School and Community Relations Department with guidance from the Policy Review Committee to reflect the practice that we currently employ to update policies and we no longer print paper copies. So striking out the lines that would allude to that.
And Tara, just for clarification, we don't print copies because obviously they change quite frequently, but people can find these on our website, correct?
Yes, all are on the website.
Thank you.
Under the policy section.
Okay, great. Any questions for Tara? All right, thank you. We'll see you next month, or in two weeks, sorry. That's still January. All right, the next item on our agenda then is item N on page thirty-seven. And this is our roofing project and I will get this motion on the table, the Board of Education approve the roofing projects at East High, Bunker Middle and Hoover Middle Schools and publish a notice to bidders. Can I get that motion on the table? Thanks, India. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, um, and is there any discussion? I know Michael Coughlin's here and I know we also have Dan here from Structure.
What, what style roofs will these be?
See, Dan, you did have to talk.
Darn it. Um, the roofing material is a, a ninety mil EPDM. Fully adhered.
Uh, thirty-year warranty?
Yes.
So it's the same as we've been putting on all our new?
Yep.
New schools.
And Dan, we saw a map, uh, both Lyle and I did in our facilities meeting of, of sort of what was covered, but just for our public, can you tell me about what percentage of our roofs we do? This is part of our normal, this is part of our normal re-roofing, but it's, this is just three buildings, correct?
Yes, this is, uh, uh, the gymnasium at Bunker.
Okay.
The, uh, at East High, it is the, um, north piece of the original building.
Okay.
And the, um, the area over what would've been, I believe, the first addition, which is where the office area is at.
Yep.
Above that area. Um, and then the third piece is at Hoover Middle School over the ori, uh, mechanical space essentially.
Great, thank you. That's what I meant, not a percentage, but just could you narrow it down a little bit about where those actual projects are happening? And this stuff would happen over the summer, next summer, over this win, coming winter?
Late, no, we're done probably for this year.
That's what I assumed, yes.
Uh, we still have projects that need to be roofed yet, but.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, next, late spring.
Late spring, okay.
Summer.
Great.
Um, one of the, the Hoover project is going to be done in, uh, conjunction with the replacement of a large chiller.
Okay.
So that kinda has to be done during.
At the same time, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Just as a, to add some perspective, uh, starting in maybe two thousand, the year two thousand, a little bit before that, we converted pretty much to the single ply membranes as they became.
Correct.
Developed. And roofs have historically been a high maintenance item and the life has always been, you never knew. And they're always hard to repair, so the membrane is a, especially the ninety mil, which is a thick, a thick piece, is easier to repair if there is a puncture because you can see where it's at, it's not covered with gravel or stone or anything. And, uh, so what's been the history of the maintenance on those buildings of the past fifteen years?
Of the buildings that we were a part of, um, I don't recall ever having been called back on any of those. Um, I'd probably have to go talk to Marty about it.
And the reason we, we call for a thirty-year ma, thirty-year warranty, which is kinda high, is that it also means they're probably not gonna fail.
Right.
Anytime soon. So, uh, we don't really know what the real life is because we haven't had one on that long, I don't believe.
Correct.
But still, so far the performance has been really good and that's why we try. The other question, you probably don't know this, like what percent of our total roof area do you think we have single plies on now, about?
I have absolutely no idea.
It'd probably be over fifty percent because of all the elementaries and.
With, I, I would guess it's, well, it's over fifty, uh, there are sections of, uh, East High that are still built ups.
Yeah.
Uh, and some of the others.
So we're getting there, so.
Yep.
That's part of our overall strategy is to reduce ongoing maintenance as much as we can through initial investments. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, I appreciate it. Anything further? All right, then all those in favor of approving the roofing projects for East High, Bunker Middle and Hoover Middle, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item O, which is on page thirty-eight. And this is the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for Increasing Enrollment, Open Enrollment Out Students Not Counted in FY twenty sixteen and Continued Funding for Limited English Proficient Instruction. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education, hold on, I gotta get to the right one. The Board of Education authorize the administration to submit the SBRC application form to the School Budget Review Committee requesting two thousand seventeen eighteen Modified Allowable Growth Funding totaling eight hundred twenty-five thousand forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents to be funded by twenty eighteen nineteen Cash Reserve levy. Can I get a motion to put that on the table, please?
Nope.
Thanks. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lyle. And discussion? Um, Michael Coughlin, I may ask you to do a little bit further explanation on this, thank you.
And for the new board members that I think are going to School Finance one oh one this week, all of this will make sense after you
All these SBRCs.
Hear about allowable growth. Allowable growth over and over and over, but it is, uh, we, uh, count our kids each fall.
we, uh, count our kids each fall, but that is to fund the following year's budget, so in the fall of sixteen, it funded the seventeen eighteen budget. The count that we just had in October will do the eighteen nineteen budget. Well, what happens is even though we've counted the kids a year before, to generate the authority of our budget, we can have more kids show up than we did in the previous year, and that's what this is. It's now the School Budget Review Committee, uh, through this process of local decision, the Board can authorize, um, the request for us to get funding, authority funding for those kids. We don't get the cash for that, but if we need to spend money to educate them, we have the authority to do that. Um, and then the actual cash comes the following year when the budget is approved, uh, through a cash reserve levy. Um, so we have three parts to this, one of them is, the number one is just the overall increase in certified enrollment, and that went up forty-three point nine kids, and if you look on page thirty-nine, uh, on the back of the exhibit, uh, our enrollment in the fall of sixteen was ten thousand three eight thirty-four point nine, and in seventeen, just last month was ten thousand eight seventy-eight point eight. And I think if you remember the newspaper article that came out, we were talking about ten thousand four hundred and some as the school enrollment. Well, those are the kids that are actually in the buildings. Um, we have, um, a couple hundred kids that open enroll out. Those are still our kids, so they're still part of our enrollment count, because we have to take the money generated from the budget and pass it on to the district that they go to. Likewise, we have, uh, students from other districts that come to Waterloo. We don't, they aren't part of this count, because they're not our kids that generate budget money. We get the money from the other district where they reside, so that's the majority of the change between certified budget and the budget of the kids in seats in the buildings. Uh, so that's the first part of this, the second part is if we have kids that we have in the district this year that open enroll out, but they weren't on last year's count, so they didn't generate any money for the district, and this year we have to send it, so that, so the, uh, School Budget Review Committee allows authority for us to have the funds to do that, it's not the whole amount of kids under that, because it's, this year it's seventy-six point two, and you have to subtract the forty-three point nine of the enrollment that went up overall, otherwise we'd be double counting some of the kids. And that's based on last year's cost per pupil, because if you look at number one, it's based on six thousand six hundred and sixty-four uh, dollars per pupil for the current year, but open enrollment is always based on the previous year's cost per pupil, that's why it's seven, six thousand five ninety-one. Uh, and then the third one is for, uh, limited English proficient students, ELL students, ELP, ELL students, ESL, uh, all the same, um, different acronyms for the same kids, um, that if we have additional kids that qualify for that, they get a weighting above their one point oh uh, regular count at point two-two weighting. So, if we have two hundred and eighteen students times that point two-two weighting, it's almost forty-eight kids that gets added that we get, um, the money for to run that program. So, when you add all those three together, that's where the eight hundred and twenty-five oh forty-four comes from, and just as a reference, and we talked about this in the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, last year, um, we didn't have increased overall enrollment, so we just had increases on the number two and number three categories, and that was seven hundred and four, uh, almost seven hundred and five thousand, so it has gone up a little bit from the year before. So, this will be presented in the eighteen nineteen budget as additional cash reserve. Uh, that will be, uh, over and above the normal formula for, uh, the eighteen nineteen budget. But this is something that happens every year in December, um, through the state after the final counts are done in October of, of the enrollment count, so that's why we always get it this time of year.
So, when will we be voting on the budget?
Um, you do the presentation in March, and then it is approved in April, and the way that you have changed the board meetings, it might be a little earlier than normal this year, so, um, we have to meet some, some, uh, guidelines of so many days between meetings and whatever, so I haven't looked at that, uh, to get that entirely in place yet, but we'll talk about it in Finance Committee in the next month.
So, just to summarize then, we're asking for the authority, if this School Budget Review Committee says yes.
And it's a local decision, so if you approve it, they will.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, it's kind of an automatic approval, all right, so then, if, so when they say yes, we can put it in our budget, but at this point, we're not taxing anybody for it.
Correct.
No.
Tonight, if it goes in the budget, and if we approve the budget, at that point it becomes a tax on the local property tax.
Correct.
Base.
Is there anything further for Michael?
You guys taking one oh one and one oh two, or two oh one?
You can't do them both at the same time.
You can?
I don't think so.
Well, there's one on one, there's two sessions, I think.
Oh, there's, there's actually three, but I thought that they were concurrent, like you couldn't take two, they're all at the same time, I think they're all from nine-
Oh, I thought I was reading that they had three sessions one day and three the next.
And even if you could, you might not want to. Because it's a lot. It'll be great, you'll learn a lot. That's why we have experts like Michael to help us, to, to guide us through, so. All right, is there anything further then on that? And seeing then all those in, uh, in favor of approving the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. We'll go on to the next acronym with S- SBRC in it, uh, the next, uh, recommendation is that, I have to get this, I made it bigger so I could read it, now it's so big I can't, there we go. Um, the next item on the agenda then is item P, which is the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for Asbestos Removal. It's on page forty, and the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the appearance at the School Budget Review Committee to request modified allowable growth of forty-two thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars for the costs associated with environmental projects, and that this increased allowable growth will be funded by two thousand eighteen nineteen cash reserve levies. Can I get that motion on the table, please?
So moved.
Thanks, India, and a second? Thanks, Esther, and discussion? Again, this is, I'll turn it over to you, but this is-
The School Budget Review Committee is the one that makes the decisions on, um, allowing additional authority for extra special circumstances, um, and they can be for a lot of different reasons. Uh, one of them that you may have heard of, uh, just in the news is when a district gets in such dire straits that they can't keep their district going because of their size or whatever, and that's a, uh, the, uh, body that oversees that. And there are several other things that they deal with, ala what we just approved, what you just approved. Um, but one of the other, uh, issues that they are instrumental in approving is uh, the removal of asbestos in buildings when they are repaired or, uh, demoed. Uh, and over the years with all of our new buildings, we've had quite a bit of that, um, and the reason they allow additional authority for that is we have no choice, uh, to do that, I mean, I remember how many years ago it was that asbestos kind of reared its ugly head, and the dangers of it all came out, and, uh, there's a lot of hoops that we have to jump through understandably for the safety of, uh, the workers and so on, uh, to remove asbestos. So, that's why it was put into the law to say, we know you have to do it, but we'll give you the authority to get that money back in your budget uh, to educate kids, um, so that's what this is, this is kind of the end of a long history of Waterloo and asbestos projects, um, and I don't have the exact number before me, but it's, it's, uh, over two and a half million dollars um, that the district has done in asbestos projects, and then got, gotten that authority back. So, this is, um, I mean, last year when we did this, uh, for Orange and Edison, it was about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that particular job, um, and this one, uh, there's a table on page forty-one, it's basically Devonshire and the old bus garage is thirty thousand of the forty-two, and the rest of it is just kind of uh, piecemeal here and there, inspections and testing, so this is the same issue again that we, um, request, uh, that we be granted our authority back for forty thousand three eighty-three, and then that would also be part of the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget as a cash reserve. And just to give you a, um, an idea of how much impact that has, um, forty-two thousand is about a dime on the tax rate. Um, so it's, it's not a big amount, um, but all of it adds together as we get into that whole scenario of developing our tax rate, all of these pieces will become part of that, and, um, part of the presentation that the Board will decide in the spring.
And again, our exposure here continues to shrink.
Yep.
Uh, none of the new schools from Cunningham on down, none of them have any asbestos in them, so that's not an issue. The orange on this sheet is the old orange, I presume.
Correct.
And so, orange is gone, the old bus garage is gone, Devonshire's gone, like you said, so, and so we're kind of getting rid of that whole asbestos thing, but obviously in the, uh, Bunker, does that have asbestos? I suppose it does, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know specifics.
But Hoover and Central and Carver wouldn't, so it'd be Hoover, Central, East and Western, Expo mostly that are the only buildings remaining that have asbestos, so.
Is it common, Michael, to have bills that are fourteen months old? Like, it's saying that invoice was from September of sixteen?
No, these have all been paid long ago.
Okay.
This is just since the last time that we presented this to the SBRC, these are the ones that we have incurred since then.
So, this money's already been spent?
Yes.
We're just asking for the authority back, is all, yeah. Is there anything further for Michael? He's still got one more exhibit, but we'll. All right, then seeing done, all those in favor of approving the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth for the Asbestos Removal, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Those conclude our action items for this evening, but we do have financial information, which is on page forty-two, it's item Q. And again, I will turn this over to Michael Coughlin.
Um, as we go through this from, uh, month to month, or every other month, when we get to this, I just want to get to the point of kind of, um, highlighting a couple of different points about this, um, because the exhibits are, are pretty comprehensive, and trying to review them every time is probably not necessary, but certainly as you see anything that you have a question, um, can certainly, uh, ask it at the meeting or in between and, and just get some information. Um, as you can see, uh, page forty-three to forty-five, um, you see everything divided out by the different funds, and they're all for different purposes. Uh, general fund, obviously, the major fund in the district, uh, paying salaries and supplies and operation for heat and lights and transportation and, um, most things that you would, um, look at with the operation of a school, and then all the other funds that go for special purposes. And the first, uh, three pages are just actually what's in their bank account at the end of each month. And then you get into page forty-six through forty-nine is the revenues for each of those, and that gets a little more, um, uh, divided out, and I'm just, I just wanted to comment on the revenues a little bit, um, that they come from different sources, on page forty-six, you've got all the local sources at the top of the page uh, in the one thousand numbers, and the first four that are shaded a little bit, those are the numbers that come from actual property tax levies. All four of those are part of that number. And then you get down into the state funding at the bottom of the page, and then a little on the next page. Um, the shaded ones are all part of the aid and levy formula, and you'll hear that. Um, when we get state aid, money comes from the state, all those different shaded areas are part of that. And, um, I know the Finance Committee members that sit and listen to the auditors, um, hear that comment every year, that state aid used to be one number, and now it's seven. Um, so that's how they just add and enhance and specialize and, uh, build up, uh, the state budget to the districts in that regard. And then in, on the next page, uh, the federal, all the federal sources where money comes from, and, and the biggest one in that is Title One, and then Medicaid reimbursements, uh, about halfway down the list, and you'll see there, in the monthly, um, columns, not much has come in. Um, because federal is, they give you the money once you've spent it, they reimburse you, so that, so most of the other sources come on a schedule, um, federal comes after you spend it and, uh, ask for reimbursement. So, then you get into the different portions of revenue and all the other, uh, specialized funds, but, um, page fifty to fifty-five then goes into all the expenses, and I'll spend another meeting commenting on those, because we're just kind of getting started in the year, um, and be able to show you some trends a little bit clearer as we get further in the year. But I always like to end it with page fifty-six with a picture saying a thousand words, and there's four pictures, so, um, this gives you an idea by graph, and then if you look to the right-hand side and look at, um, the balance in the bank accounts for each of the major funds, um, that we've been very consistent and been very healthy. Um, so, we will continue to, uh, work on that in the next, uh, year as we start talking about approving the current, or going through the current year's budget and planning for next year, so, um, that just kind of gives you an idea of where, uh, how money has flowed through the district through our major funds. And again, if you have any questions on anything, um, just send an email, what does that mean, or what, what is that picture, what is that talking about? I heard this at School Board Convention, I have no idea what you're talking about. Um, and it's, it's a continual learning process. Even when I do it all the time, I learn things all the time, because they change the rules all the time. Um, and we'll be talking about some of those a little more as time goes on as well.
So, on page forty-three, this is strictly cash, has nothing to do with accruals, right? Cash balances.
Yes.
So, thirty-one million on June thirtieth or one July from last year, we had thirty-one million cash.
Yep.
And then eight million, that dropped by eight million- And then eight million, that dropped by eight million in July because of the July teacher salaries?
Yes.
And nothing coming in, basically? And then the same thing in August?
Correct.
And then September, I mean, cash, it doesn't make any difference. But the September teacher salaries go on accrual wise the next year?
Yep. The current year starts for teacher salaries in September.
But but the influx of cash will come with state aid or property tax whenever that comes?
State aid because property tax won't come until October, November.
So the cash starts to come, when do we get the state?
It leveled off. And if you look at that, we had nine million in receipts and ten million in expenses.
Oh, okay. I got it.
And that was primarily state aid.
We get state aid again every month?
Yep.
So the two dry months are July and August.
So then it gets, and you can kind of see that pattern as you look at the graph on the back, that in October, I included October in there just because I like to see the number jump up. So you can see that the influx of property tax with the state aid made our balance go up in October.
Okay, thanks.
And I have to say, Michael, these are awesome. I can actually see them. There's true color, not just shading, but they're green bars. I love it.
The print shop is learning.
Yeah, it looks good, better for my visual brain. I appreciate it, so. All right, anything else for Mr. Coughlin tonight? India and Aster, I guarantee you're going to come back with a list of questions for him and it'll be good. So learn something new every time, so.
It might hurt to take this down, right?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you, Michael. I appreciate that. The next item on our agenda then is our superintendent's report.
You bet. I guess first for the the viewer public, I would just highlight that we have coming up, not not before Christmas break, but after holiday break, we have the eighth grade parent meetings for eighth graders and their parents. And we put the word mandatory on that, meaning trying to signal how important these meetings are. So I'm just going to actually, we've sent them out a variety of ways, but this is just one more way to get the message out. So we have them on January eighth at Hoover, January eleventh at Bunker, January sixteenth at Carver, January twenty-third at Central. And then we actually have two meetings that we hold right here in this building at different times, on one in the morning and one at noon. And those are on January eighteenth at eight AM and then January twenty-fifth at noon. And we do that, we pick a variety of nights. We have Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, just trying to make sure that we give parents a lot of options, morning, noon. And most of those are in the evening at the schools. And so last year, I believe we ended the the meeting. We did not get a hundred percent attendance. I did not think we would get a hundred percent attendance. But we actually did pretty well. I I think if I remember right, I think we had about seventy-three percent of parents attend. I I really would love that to be closer to ninety percent because it is, I mean, actually, I'd love to have a hundred percent, but I know, you know, we we may not be able to get everyone. One thing I would tell all of the parents, and actually, you guys can help us get the word out. One of the things that I would say is that the end, we we did a survey to all of the parents. And I believe that we batted about, you know, ninety-nine percent of the the people loving the meeting. We had a couple of people who said, I didn't find it helpful. But even people who had, you know, we had one mom who was her fifth child, and she said, I just wish you would have had this even with my first child. So we really do ask them to come. They will get a lot of information about their their children's schedule and what high school will look like. It's just so important to have that that conversation. Something we're adding this year is we're adding booths out in the, once we do the business meeting in the, wherever it might be cafeteria or auditorium. We will have booths out in the in the cafeteria so that people can go out. And they might want to learn something about JROTC or they might want to learn about the Waterloo Career Center. So parents could go out and talk with teachers. They can visit the booths, pick up information. One of the questions that was asked last year from parents of eighth graders, because they had heard so, how important it was to get involved, the the biggest question we got asked was, how would we know what offerings there are? How do we know what options we have? And so we're going to make sure that we have those, that information available that night. So those are really good, good things. And and we've already started, we've sent out save the date cards. We've put it out widely on social media and we will continue to do that. So I think parents, there will be no reason that you don't know about those dates. And and you can come to any one of them. A lot of parents will choose the one that's at their child's school. But that is not necessary because they are all identical. So we have people who come to a variety of of them, so we sure hope people will get those on their calendar. Something that's, I guess, I I just want to highlight one thing. On page thirty-four of our agenda, there are a couple of meetings coming up and we will make sure we get that out broadly. But I just want to make sure for any viewers who might be looking at that, in in January, you just heard me talk about January eighth is one of the meetings. And so we will actually be moving this meeting up to five o'clock. And that will allow us to finish this meeting, well, finish maybe. And if not, I will be leaving because I'm leading the eighth grade parent meeting.
Maybe not.
Right, right. But we moved that up to five o'clock for that. So there's no other reason except for that we are trying to host a one of the eighth grade parent meetings. And then in February, we moved one meeting up from the twelfth to the fifth. We're just having the first meeting in February one week earlier. That's still actually, because there's five Mondays in January, it still allows us a nice schedule, so we won't have any back-to-back meetings. But just a couple of meetings that I think are important to highlight. And then I think two quick more, two more quick things. Beth Smith and I will be starting this week to visit, going out to visit all of our new teachers in the district. We have been kind of spot, you know, I've seen them as I've been out in buildings. But we're actually making a concerted effort to get out to visit all of our new teachers. And so we have dates on the calendars, we have lists of new teachers, and we'll be stopping by to say hi. And I actually did something kind of crazy. I cleaned out all of the books from my my kids' rooms. And so I have those and we're taking stacks of books and and letting them pick through. It's a good place to find a home. And and as India can tell you, that's really important to have a a good library. So we're going to drop off books and we're going to do a variety of things. And so that's exciting for us to get that on the calendar. And then the last thing.
How many new teachers are there?
Um, you know, I don't know how many there are. There's probably, yeah, sixty, sixty, maybe seventy new. It's a lot. We're going to do, we're actually just tackling a building or two depending on. We've we've actually scheduled them so that if there's one building that only has five, we'll do two buil- two buildings and get out and visit them and remind them how glad that we are that they are here with us. So that's exciting. We thought about taking like a scratch cupcake, but we are a Blue Zone school district, so we're not taking them a scratch cupcake, although, yeah, that would be wonderful. Carrots. Yeah, carrots. We'll take them carrots or something, so. And then the last thing, only because I get asked this quite a bit, I just want to remind everyone that on our website, we do have a place on our website that if you go to the district website and then you go to the the link right at the top, that's calendars, and then you go to the activity calendar. We, I still get asked quite a bit, like, how would we know when this music event is? How would I get, how would I know when, if there's a ball game, you know, tonight, a basketball game or whatever? That, we really have worked hard to keep that activities calendar up to date. At the very beginning, there, we didn't push it quite as much because we were just trying to to hammer out some of the details as it went live. But I really do think that it is very up to date now. So I would really urge everyone to go to that that website. If you have any questions, what if, what time something starts, where it's going to be held, the location is there. Or if you're just, sometimes, you know, you find yourself and you you just want to go to an event and you can search to see, you can search by day and that kind of thing. So I would drive everybody to the website. And that's it for today.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start down here to my left. I'm going to start with India tonight with information from board members.
Sounds good. Jesse is usually here and he's usually promoting sports, but I know that the sports are, have started for the fall sports, swimming, wrestling, basketball for at least middle school. And I just want to say kudos to the girls who are going out for wrestling. There are a lot of young ladies who are doing wrestling for the middle school. And I just want to say that is really, really great. They seem very enthusiastic for the ones I've spoken to. And I know this is kind of stepping out of the norm, and I love it. I love that they're offering the extra mural for everybody who wants to be part of wrestling or any type of sport. And so planting that seed for those young ladies so they can be part of wrestling. It's been awesome. So I just wanted to say kudos to that.
Thanks, India. Sue?
Your report. Thank you.
All right, Rhonda?
Yes, I just wanted to thank a lot of the community partners who, we just did a a reading without walls with Jubilee Church and the Waterloo Commission on Human Rights. And I want to especially thank the University of Northern Iowa students who came out to read to the third and fourth grade students that showed up. And that's really awesome. And the reason this is important is because a lot of the data shows that children who cannot read by the third grade are four times less likely to graduate than those students who can read by that age. And so our professional learning community, our PLCs at Waterloo are doing an excellent job with our reading programs. But it also really makes me feel good to know that our community partners are showing up and showing out to help our our third and fourth grade students read. And so hopefully, we will be doing the Reading Without Walls again, which is a third and fourth grade reading initiative. So again, I just want to say thank you to University of Northern Iowa volunteers.
Thanks, Rhonda. Aster?
Thanks, Shelly. About two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to take a group of young men to a banquet, the NAACP banquet, through a program through East High called African American Males Achieving Success. And I'd like to report that the the kids were on their best behavior. Dr. McNulty can attest to that. He had the opportunity to sit with these young men and engage with them. They met a lot of people. They were enthused and they enjoyed themselves. So I just wanted to report that back to the board and.
Thanks for taking them. That's an awesome thing.
What age were these?
They were sophomores and juniors.
Did you say they all tenth and eleventh? Yeah.
So it was it was four, four young men, so.
Thanks. Lyle, anything?
No.
All right, and I have no report this evening other than just to remind our viewers that our next meeting will be in December, the eleventh. And then we actually have two, one the following week on the eighteenth. I'm looking forward this week, we get to attend as board members. We don't get to do much together outside of the boardroom. And so we will be all attending the Iowa Association of School Board Convention on Wednesday, Thursday, and also some UEN Urban Education Network stuff. So I'm looking forward to that and appreciate the opportunity to do that. And I guess lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving because that's here next week already. So wow, November is flying by. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Sue, and a second? Thanks, Rhonda. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Good night. Thanks.